We're rolling. We are rolling.
I'm hyped, though.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna introduce the show. Also, my video failed for the, for the Nick Core episode. It was just a still image of me the whole episode. I don't know if you saw it.
Yeah, I saw that.
So this is another episode of the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm John Edwards, your host, and my co-host today is Peggy Suamehe back from a long hiatus. Welcome back.
Thank you for having me. I'm glad to be back despite my inability to use a calendar effectively.
Yeah, I've been making fun of you on the last two episodes we recorded, so.
Thank you for that.
That was fun. We're gonna, we're gonna have Jeremy Schrader, who was a council member in Ward 11, coming up in a few minutes, but now we're just gonna do co-host banter.
Yeah, I, I have, I apologize for my, my poor calendar-based skills. This is something I've always been kind of bad at. I think I got better in the pandemic of effectively scheduling things because I didn't go anywhere. But now that like summer has just like, I don't know if it's this way for you, but I think with our wedding and everything, this every day is just packed. So, and I, unfortunately, I actually ended up going, had a night meeting for work, so it's not movable. So I apologize.
We don't hold it against you. It makes good fodder for the podcast.
Yeah, and I, I'll compliment you now that we're, you know, live again on the updated decor. I just think that looks so nice.
It is beautiful, especially the thing that I've draped over the stuff that I don't want people to see on the shelves behind me. Not that it's anything exciting. That's the purpose of that curtain.
I just love like how much merch you have. It's just really mugs, hats. How do I get in on this?
Well, there's a, there's a couple of stores. There's an Etsy store and there's a, a teespring store. So the merchandise is spread across a few different platforms.
So listeners at home can get their own Wedge Live paraphernalia.
Yeah, I think there's a tab, menu tab on WedgeLive.com that will lead you to the various stores.
I haven't, I don't think I've seen you since the Wedge Live family reunion. That was extremely fun.
Yeah, it was exciting to see people in person. We got you and Jason Garcia and Anton was there. Saw everyone's favorite co-host.
There's a lot of people there. It was good. We should do another one.
It was the point at which we were emerging from the pandemic and everyone was excited to see people. And now we're at the point where people are tired of seeing people, I think. Are you still excited to see people? Are you tired?
Oh, you know, it comes and goes. I think I've definitely had days where like I'm more tired than I used to be. I don't know if this is just pandemic fatigue, like getting really used to being at home a lot. Like I literally didn't leave, you know, for like months. I had a lot of like pandemic anxiety. I really thought I was like, there is a moment there that this is like not rooted in like logic, but I was like, I'm gonna get COVID and die. So I cannot leave my home. So I don't know. I think like, I'm really excited to spend time with like people I care about, but in terms of like group events, it's a, or like going out to do something, I'm still very rooted in like, let me just order that online. Like I do not need to go to the mall. I do not need to go do a thing. I just want to be in my house.
Yeah, I did, I did okay through the pandemic because, I don't know, not a lot changed for me. I'm used to not seeing a lot of people and I'm okay with that. But coming out of the pandemic into this election year, I'm stressed out by 2021. It's, are you stressed out?
I'm stressed. I, I, I'm stressed out for 2021. I'm stressed for 2022. I think both of those are gonna be really big in terms of local and national politics. And I don't know, working for a local government, that's always like, I think that adds another layer of stress where you don't know what your council makeup's gonna look like. I think that's something that in Minneapolis politics, I'm surprised don't get talked about as much, right? It's like, there's such a huge Minneapolis staff and they, you know, this really, you know, volatile political environment makes it really hard to do their jobs and it makes it like hard to effectively serve residents when there's like political instability. Obviously Minneapolis is just a little bit different when, you know, some stuff just keeps on moving, but I have a lot of sympathy for Minneapolis staff this year.
Yeah, Minneapolis is so big. Just kind of, I don't know. I don't, I don't have much intelligence to say about that, Peggy Sue. I'm sorry. I failed on that one.
You don't have to say anything intelligent about it. You can just let me say that I feel, I feel up, I do feel sympathy. And there's probably a lot of people who are like, we don't even care. It doesn't, you know, Public Works employees don't care, right? Or like, yeah, there's lots of people who this doesn't affect them, but.
I just, I just wonder if we'll get to the end and the chief will feel supported at the end. Will he feel supported by the election result? Because we're, I think, a theme for a lot of people this election year is support our chief.
How do you feel about the video that went viral yesterday of, or over the weekend of Andrea Jenkins getting kind of trapped in?
That stressed me out. I didn't like that. Didn't like that at all. Did you like that?
I just, I don't know that. I, I don't know that that's like the most effective way. I, I don't know. I, I don't like it. I also understand it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I'm also, I'm curious if a signature extracted under duress from like 90, being detained for 90 minutes, pledging to get Jacob Frye to resign or supporting his resignation. I'm not sure that's legally binding. I don't think the mayor's required to resign now.
No, definitely not. And I just don't think it's effective, but I do empathize with feeling that you had to get to that level, right? That you were feeling like you weren't having those conversations. And that's, I think that's the component that I like empathize with of like that you, that there are definitely folks who felt like Andrea was, you know, Councilmember Jenkins was truly not responding to them in a way that was like getting them to where they wanted to go. And not that, not that they, she needs to agree with them. I don't think that's her role as council member either is to say yes to everyone who wants something from her. But I do understand feeling like it has to come to this, like these tactics of, I know, I don't know if I'm articulating that that way. Like I, I do understand residents feeling like you're not hearing us and we want to be heard.
It's a tricky situation because, I mean, there's a history of people like act up in the gay rights movement, people like going beyond what is like respectability politics. And so there's a part of me that doesn't want to judge someone else's tactics or say what I, what I think is the effective way to do politics. But the video, you know, I was, I, I did not like what I saw.
Yeah, I didn't either. And I just think, I can't imagine how unsafe she felt, you know, like that is just, that's miserable. I don't wish that for anyone at all. And I think that's, you articulated that like perfectly where it's like, I don't want to judge someone for, for doing, you know, we, there have to be those times in, in political movements that require, you know, really aggressive. Buddy, hi, yes, I see you. There's a cat laying right on the mousepad here. There, there's, there's a time and a place for having these really aggressive ways to get your point across. That is not one that I loved personally, because it's just, I just feel like, how could she have felt at all safe?
Yeah, and the perfect timing with Jeremy Schrader coming on. Jeremy Schrader, welcome to the Wedge Live Podcast.
Hey, happy to be here.
Oh, you sound great, too. What is that, a mic? You got a fancy microphone? Where's the sound coming from?
No, I, you, you gave me the advice to go with a headset, so I'm going with a headset.
Okay, that sounds, sounds great. You should bring that out for council meetings. Okay, Jeremy Schrader is the city council member, Minneapolis City Council Member in Ward 11. And the first thing I have on my agenda here, council member, is the obligatory chicken question. And I think I have to hand it over.
Tell us the names of your chickens.
Sure. So we have two batches of chickens. The first, the oldest chickens are all named after Pokemon. We made the mistake of letting our kids name all of our chickens. So we've got Pikachu, Charizard, and Jigglypuff. And then for the other two, the newest ones we just got this year, they, one is Sweetie Pie and the other one is PJ.
I'm gonna be honest with you. I think the Pokemon names are best.
I'm not gonna disagree on that. Our first batch was named after famous women in history. So I think that, that was a little more classy.
Batch? Did, did, do you have a batch that's now gone? Are they no longer with us?
We did. We, we had a first batch. So we've had chickens for a little bit. And then this newest, we had, the last batch we got, we lost one to a fox and then we added two more chickens this last spring.
Okay, I think we covered the chicken issue. Okay, let's, so there was, go ahead.
The chickens are gonna be the only softball, so we had to start out with the chickens.
There's a couple. I have, I have a softball coming up early, so that's not true. The NFL conventions are over and the result in Ward 11 was no endorsement, but you were trailing in the final round. Jeremy Schrader, convince me you're gonna be okay.
Oh, that's, that's not hard at all. So the, the conventions are just one part of it. The real election comes in November. It is a time when everyone in Ward 11 gets a chance to vote. This was a really tar, hard time to do the convention. Like there was a lot of, a lot of issues with people getting involved. I had folks that, you know, frankly, were just exhausted from the pandemic. And a lot of folks that honestly did not know it was happening. So, you know, I'm continuing to hit the doors and let people know about the election. I've got a lot of, gotten a lot of momentum, you know, since the, like the, the no endorsement actually gave me a little bit of a bump that folks are starting to turn out for volunteers as well as fundraising. So it's really turned into more of a campaign since then.
How depressed are you that you're going through this hellish election year only to win, only, only to win a two-year term rather than a four-year term?
No, I think that that, that is a, an issue. Of course, I'd love to be rolling into four years. What I've been able to do in four years has been, you know, something I'm really proud of, you know, with four years, I've been able to increase policies around affordable housing, around environmental justice. With two years, it's gonna be, it's a tight turnaround. You know, I think election years make it tough to really do the longer policy change. What I do like about election years is just the chance to reconnect with people in the ward. It is something that folks, there's a lot of folks that just take advantage of the campaign that you, you won't hear from normally. So there's, there's pros and cons to both.
And so I don't, let's get to know Jeremy Schrader. What neighborhood do you live in and how did you come to live there?
Sure, I live in the Diamond Lake neighborhood. So it's right by Fat Lorenzo's and the Five Eight Club. We, how we got here, or my family got here is we, we made a list of everything we wanted. And, you know, our realtor said like, you can't have a private island off in Lake Superior. You can't afford that. So then we started looking at other things and just ended up here. Like we're pretty, pretty near the airport. We had a house that really fit all that needs right by Lake Nakomas, by bike trails, was walkable, and still close to, we have family in the South Metro. So just being able to hit all of those, we, we found our, the home we're gonna be in.
Peggy Sue, do you see the agenda I have laid out here?
I do.
Okay, I, I feel like I've been, I've been too soft so far and I want to throw the next soft one to you.
All right. Hold on, I have a, so I have it pulled up on my computer and then there's a, you can't see him. There is a small cat who has decided to take up all of the desk space. So let me flip that. Okay. Um, so, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, y'all. This cat is really ruining my life.
Peggy Sue's new.
You can give him the soft one. I'll give him a hard one. I'm sorry, because this is like loading all a million pages of the document here.
So you started the term zoning and planning committee chair, which, you know, comes with the extra work of being on the planning commission. You've been, so that's extra scrutiny, potential controversy development is controversial. You've also taken a leadership role on, wait, Peggy Sue, did you delete everything?
No, I'm sorry. I, my cat was pressing the enter button with this tiny head. And so then I had to go back. He, he pushed enter all the way down the page.
Okay, that's messing me up here.
I was like, why can't it, why won't it stop scrolling? I can read the rest of the question, which is taking a leadership role on the public safety charter amendment. But these are not necessarily topics that are conducive to getting reelected in Ward 11. You could have hidden from it. This is, so can you tell us a little bit about maybe the courage that that takes or, you know, why you decided to be a leader on that, even despite kind of the makeup of your ward?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's the reason I ran for office to begin with. Before becoming elected, I spent almost 20 years in the nonprofit sector, you know, being an executive director, being a policy director, you know, leading on these issues. And what eventually got me to run was that, you know, the, the pace of change that we, we need to see wasn't happening. You know, the, the current elected officials at that time, where you would see a compromise that would get us, that would be a step forward, but not as far as we needed to go. I also just felt like the, the way elected officials and politicians really treated people was lacking. Like, I mean, we were having discussions that, you know, there were the elevator speech, but the, the issues we're talking about are just more complex. And so it is a challenge to really take that extra time and work on like how you can actually communicate, like the nuances of these really difficult issues. But I, that's what's needed right now. You know, we're not gonna solve the big crisis of our time unless we really dig into them and are committed to good outcomes.
So in what ways has the job of council member surprised you? You ran in 2017. I imagine you didn't know 100% what you were getting into. Has anything surprised you?
It has. I mean, I, I think, I get that question a lot. So, you know, working pretty close to government, I would see elected officials get pulled to the side and then talked to about garbage pickup for, for two to three hours. And so, you know, being someone that was at the state capital and worked in other, in other cities, you know, that part of it I, I knew. But what did surprise me, especially coming from the nonprofit sector, working with people that are really passionate about policy, my, my previous work in the nonprofit sector was a lot more collaborative. You know, it was something that we would work between competing nonprofits, even ones that were, you know, fun, competing for funding. It was, the goal was so much more important. And I, and I think at City Hall, like you have people that are dedicated and passionate, but the dynamics are very different. Like the, the, the politics gets, it clouds things in a, in a way that I was, a little more than I was expecting. And it is, it's something that it's, it's not on every issue and it's not every person, but it is something that, you know, I think I had hoped that it would be a little bit more, more collaborative.
One of the things Steve Fletcher said when I asked him this was, you kind of get, you expect to be interacting, because he comes from the world of activism a little bit. And so you expect to be surrounded by your political allies and activists in, in conversation with them all the time, but it turns out like you'll hear from them occasionally when they have a big issue or a big campaign to push. But the rest of the time, like you're stuck hearing from more powerful interests, lobbyists, business interests who want to talk to you. And it's like, you have to make time to connect with regular people and stay connected in that way. Do you find that's true?
Uh, somewhat. I mean, I, I think the, the part you said where you, you have to make time is definitely true. You know, my time in office, you know, I've made time for kind of the nonprofits and, and folks that are doing the, the things that are, are gonna move the city forward. And the big interests, like frankly, I've been pretty, pretty frank with them and taking the votes that they, they know where I stand. There's not a lot of, you, you can, I absolutely meet with anybody. I, I met with Operation Safety Now. I met with other folks as well. But that said, you know, it is, it is something that I, I make sure to make time for those that are, you know, doing, doing the right things.
Peggy Sue, do you want to take the next one?
Yeah, so you have kind of taken an issue in climate change issues. And obviously, transportation and the way that we move about Minneapolis is a big climate issue. Would you be interested to, in taking over the Transportation and Public Works Committee next term and free us from what John would identify as a weird sway that he seems to have over Public Works? Definitely, he says it's easier than zoning. As a planner, I would disagree. It's probably, I guess.
Controversy, right?
It's less controversial, but the issues are probably a little bit more. Let's give Public Works some credit, right?
I think it's a good transition. Would you take, would you want to be transportation? First of all, do you want to be zoning and planning chair next term if we have a zoning plan and planning committee next term?
I would like to continue to work on housing. I don't know that I'd want to be, continue to be zoning and planning chair. As much as I love planning commission, it is, I think, on the transportation side, I, I wouldn't rule it out. I already do a lot of work with Public Works. I'm working with them on kind of the rollout of biochar as well as a number of other kind of issues with our kind of built environment. But I would say just the, the expertise I've gained from being on the zoning and planning, to be able to continue to do that, I, I think there's a lot of work that we need to do on our built environment, especially around fighting climate change. And I'd love to continue that work.
And so, so it sounds like you would be at least willing to give up the zoning and planning chair. And so what committee would you want to chair if not that one?
Well, I'd like, I, I will have to see what the committees become, but I would still be interested in anything that's going to deal with housing, that's going to really continue to, to work on climate change.
Okay. And so when you're talking to voters and you're, you're explaining to them why they should care about a city election, which is, you know, lower turnout than some of our higher profile elections, how do you explain the stakes and what, what do we lose without Jeremy Schrader on the council?
Well, a couple of things, like this, this job is, I, I call it a service job plus. You know, like it is so critical that you have, you know, an active, engaged and accessible council member to make sure like your basic city services are done, whether that's someone picking up your garbage or someone plowing your street. What you lose without Jeremy Schrader, many of my colleagues, is the, the extra part. You know, I've been able to do the job and do the job well to make sure city services are working for the entire ward. But I've done that in a way that I also have time to work on inclusionary zoning, to also declare a climate emergency, to also call out the state when they're not doing all they can around, you know, transportation equity or environmental justice. And it is a really tough job. And I'm able to do that because I've had almost 20 years, you know, working beforehand. You know, I know how to run organizations. I know how to handle budget. And then how to, you know, balance all of that to make sure that there's positive outcomes for everybody.
It's like you don't have a boss. So you could do this job in a couple of different ways. You could do it the hard way and like have priorities and actually legislate, or you could just take it easy and try to maintain the status quo. I've seen you trying to make changes, so I can vouch for that.
And he does have a boss. His whole ward is his boss.
That's true. I guess the voters are your boss, but sometimes they don't always punish people for bad job performance.
That's true.
You have said on your website, we have a failing system of public safety, which is a characterization I would agree with. I don't, I don't know if we're making, I don't think that if that's, can, I wonder if that's connecting with people. Because, so we've had decades of police abuse, police killing, but we're also failing at all the rest of like the nuts and bolts, public safety stuff. Even if you're someone who says the brutality and racism is the cost of doing business, like the cost we pay as a city has gotten us like an MPD that imploded over the last year all by itself. Nobody dismantled them. They kind of dismantled themselves. So is that, are you able to make that argument in a way that's connecting with people? Or are they, they stuck on this dichotomy of abolish, like either we're gonna have police or we're not? Like it feels like, no matter which side you pick in this election, police are here. It's like how, it's how we structure public safety that's at stake, not the existence of police.
That's a really good question. I would say I'm able to connect probably about 75% of the time. You know, some folks are stuck where you, you talked about, John. Like it's either you're for police or you're against. And there's no, there's no bringing in any nuance to that. There's no bringing in a, we're getting sued by the state and we're investigated by the feds. So now what do you think? There's no, we lost 200 officers and we have an increase in crime. What, what are we going to do with that? And so it, it is something that with 75%, just being able to, to talk about that where, you know, take people where their original arguments are and then bring in the, the harsh realities we have. You know, when you, you talked about the police kind of a MPD imploding and them kind of defunding themselves, like no one planned for 200 officers to just leave. You know, I think if it was up to, to me, I would have preferred that we're able to, you re-interview every single officer and make sure they're at the standards that we wanted. And that one would have, you know, made sure we had better officers, but two, created a system of better supervision and discipline. And, and we've done none of that. You know, with, we, we really are in this, you know, this state because 200 officers just left. And so we're kind of stuck with a, a negative situation when, you know, all this energy is around like what does public safety become? You know, and on my website, when I talk about a failing system, like I, I was getting emails and calls two to three years ago where folks weren't happy with the current public safety system on every side, whether that was the, the slow response times or just the, the way MPD kind of was handling just the, what some of the crimes in Ward 11. Like there's a lot of improvement that needed to happen around, you know, how we have communication with the, with community, how we're respecting folks throughout the whole city, and also just how we have an answer. And, and I think one of the reasons I'm one of the authors of the Transforming Public Safety is to send a clear message that all of Minneapolis needs a new public safety system. And all of Minneapolis can, can be doing so much better for people when we're at, when they're asking for help. Like right now, if you call 911, you get a cop. You know, if you are in, you call 911 because you need help. And we are not evaluating that, what that ask is, and then delivering the best person that's most qualified as soon as possible. So we, we can be doing better.
I'd just be curious to know, like on that, it feels very, as John said, like very extreme. Like as you're out talking to voters, do you feel like there's a side that's more easily swayable in terms of like those who are very like abolish the police, we can't have, we need a system with no police, or the people who, you know, feel like the city is like a crumbling dystopian nightmare of, that needs, you know, triple the amount of police? Like have you found that there's a side that's easier to like sway with logic?
That's, that's really insightful. I, I wouldn't say that there is. I, I think on both of those extremes, like when folks are abolish the police, there's something behind that. That's usually a really, like they've had a terrible experience with MPD or with law enforcement. And that's just, and it's usually not one. It's usually reinforced over and over and over again consistently. Other folks on the other side, you know, they're, they're seeing crime where there hasn't been crime before. And that's for them like very hard to get out of. And I think what's also tough, like we, you know, everyone deserves to be safe. You know, everyone in the city wants that and that, that is a human right. And the answers we have are not great. You know, we are really talking about really redefining public safety and making sure people get the help that they need. But we don't have that system right now. And so it's, it's hard for people to really, I don't know that it's hard for people to imagine it. It's hard for people to trust it. They want something now. They want to know that it's going to work. And it's, it's understandable, but it, it's also not the reality we're in.
You know, when you go long on your answers, I'm gonna play the sound effect. You ready?
With, with all due respect, I was serious about wrapping up. If you could take the next 20 seconds to wrap up.
That's right. That's a clip, audio clip from the zoning and planning committee. Not that, not that you were going long. You, you've got a very good pace, very good answer length, because some, some of these new candidates, they, they just talk and talk. They think they've got a filibuster. Like there are no other candidates here to interrupt you. It's just you. You've got plenty of time. Okay, so I was kind of surprised to, to see the field training officer presentation a few days ago. Okay. So I was kind of surprised to, to see the field training officer uh, presentation a few days ago. I don't know, this was probably already public, but it was kind of shocking to me. Like there's no formalized, standardized level of training for, for MPD's field training officers. There's no performance review process. Is it, like, is it too much to have expected this to be fixed sooner than 2022, considering that Derek Chauvin was a field training officer? Like, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, if you listen to the Audit Committee, which I'm, I'm on, like I, those were my questions. I mean, I was, I wasn't shocked, um, but I, I mean, I, I'm not happy that after a year since, you know, the world watched the field training officer program, you know, in action murdering George Floyd. I, I would hope that MPD would have changed just, just anything, you know, and I, I think that really i- is a great kind of lens into, you know, how when folks are talking about reforming MPD and why I'm not in that group and think we need a wholly new, whole new department, is they're, they're not doing that. I mean, i- if MPD was doing more to police itself and to hold itself accountable, you would see a very different output from, from myself and from other city council members. But the fact is, after a year of seeing just the horror of how their field training officer program is going um, and not seeing any change, um, it, there, there's a lot of concern and I, I've heard a lot of, you know, very fair questions from constituents. So how do they know anything is going to change? And it, yeah, go ahead.
No, you can, you can continue. I'm sorry.
No, I'm just waiting for the sound effect to happen, so.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with all due respect, I was serious about wrapping up.
So, so another thing that came out of that Audit Committee was the idea that, that this, this look at MPD might have to wait until some of the federal and state investigations are done, so we don't duplicate effort. But it occurs to me that could take years. And if we want to correct some of the problems, and I know like potentially the city doing these, these investigations of itself could take a long time too. I know that was part of the discussion, but I, I don't, I don't know if I, I don't know, it seems bad to wait for, for the outcome of a years-long process to decide, well, the feds didn't cover it, so I guess we now have to look at it. It seems like this could be drawn out a very long time. And it's a very urgent.
I would add to that, I agree with that. Uh, I, I think that the couple of things I would add, um, like first, you know, what staff was saying, and it makes a lot of sense, like duplicating efforts is going to take staff time, it's going to take cost to do something that, you know, the feds as well as the Department of Human Rights is already investigating. Um, but I, I, I share your, I pretty, actually pretty passionately agree with you. Uh, because the, the problem with waiting is one, we, we have a moral imperative to fix our police department. You know, we do, every time, every day that we are waiting, um, is another day that we have, have not changed a, a, a system that is, you know, harming residents in Minneapolis. And so it's, uh, it's not as simple as that, um, but it is something we have heard repeatedly and just seen, you know, multiple issues of misconduct and that needs to be addressed, you know, quickly. And then on the, the other second part of that is, you know, if we're waiting for investigators to tell us, like they're, they're going to judge us for what we're doing. And, you know, when, if we haven't made any change, they're, they will likely, you know, treat us like I treat my kids. If my kids haven't learned anything, I'm a little harsher. You know, if I, they, if we have not looked at the very obvious problems and done anything, the federal government as well as the state, they're gonna, they're gonna think we have to learn our lesson more. Um, at the, and that's, that may be the worst case scenario, but the best case scenario would be that they would add on how long we're being monitored. Uh, most of these investigations lead to a consent decree and a lot of that takes, they'll, they'll do monitoring for years to make sure you're doing what you're supposed to be doing and that, that's at the city cost. Um, and it could be quite expensive and the less we do, that will determine whether we get five years or 10 years or 15 years. And that's, that's money we can be spending on reform. That could be money that we are spending on recruiting more diverse officers. That's money we could be doing everything that people is ta- are talking about. Like it doesn't matter where you are in the spectrum, that's money that could be spent on that. And instead of that, we're, we're waiting. Um, and to the point of like the, the investigation and the staff time that would it take? I mean, we've seen issues that haven't been resolved, whether that's discipline um, or it's just how long the disciplines happen or the field training officers. Other things we can be doing are, are reading other consent decrees. You know, we're not the first city to be investigated. We won't be the first city to get a consent decree. We can see exactly what the federal government said when they're faced with problems like ours and we can start to implement that.
You and some other council members have kind of clashed with the mayor, me also. We hate French fries and uh, I, so it's kind of easily left the impression that perhaps he is not transparent enough. Um, and this seems like more than just a few million dollars difference in how much money should go to MPD. It seems like maybe there's, you know, a longer standing issue of, of transparency and, and teamwork that's not maybe happening there. Um, as someone who's gotten a look at, up close at the mayor, what do you look for? What should the public be looking for in a new mayor?
Well, I think in, in any mayor, uh, looking at, and actually any elected official, look, look at the ability to do, to do the job. Um, as you're looking to who can be mayor, look at someone with managerial experience that's run a budget that can, you know, definitely move folks and, and pass a policy. Um, and, and I think too many times we look at the, a campaign to see how well a campaign does. And, and a campaign is, is a good indicator, uh, but it's, it's no substitute for actual real life experience, you know, where we've all, you know, I've, I had a 20-year career before getting elected. You can look at all of that. And, you know, I actually ran on that and that, that ideally that is what people are judging. Um, it's too easy to just have, um, you know, have these soundbites and, and some of it is just, I, I would also criticize the way we do campaigns, you know, I, I've done screenings, I've done forums. And you have these, have two minutes to answer a really hard question and you get the soundbite. And I, I think the only time, and it's not a debate, um, and that said, like, I mean, I, I'm, I'm an attorney and so I've been trained in debate and can do that in a civilized way that still brings out the issues. Uh, but I would say in Minnesota, we want to make sure we're being nice to everybody. So there's, it's a little bit more difficult. But I think that we need to have a way that we're asking the hard questions. And I think what's, that's been really tough in this election cycle. And even like even, even on your, your question, like I definitely clash and disagree with the mayor. Uh, and at the same time, I'm, I'm working with them on affordable housing. I'm working with them on it. We've, we're working on a current project on a for, um, environmental justice that I'm really excited about, you know, there, this is a, we're professionals and we have a job to get done. Uh, so I think, um, in addition to that, I, I think being able to just ask the hard questions and ask hard follow-up questions. Cause I would say that's what's really lacking right now, uh, where you might get a real question in the media, uh, but then there's no follow-up. You'll have a press conference and then no follow-up to what actually happened from there. There's no timeline of accountability. Um, at least for, you know, the current mayor.
So are you comfortable, uh, or are you at a place yet where you're endorsing a mayoral candidate?
No, I'm not endorsing right now.
Why, why would a city council, can't, city council candidate wade into that? Why, why do you want him to step into?
Good for you for asking.
He could have opinions. He could be like, uh, he could be a, a big fan of a candidate.
He has so many opinions, but he's not gonna tell us.
He might. We won't know unless we ask.
Half of your ward hating you because you didn't endorse the right candidate.
Fair enough. Uh, I, I have a follow-up question, um, in the nonsense that Mayor French Fries has chosen to do is one of those things is clearing uh, George Floyd Square. And uh, one of my very good friends lives in your ward and you canvassed their house. And they asked you about George Floyd Square and your answer was that it was not in your purview. So uh, they were not satisfied, so I was sent with the task to, to ask you about this. But you know, what's your, what's your thought process on how that played out and what would you have done differently?
Sure. And so just to, I'll, I'll start with the unhappy with the result, um, part, quite part of the question. It, it, it isn't in city council purview and I, I know that's not a satisfying answer, uh, but I would say what I have learned in the last year, like last time city council reacted when uh, would be, you know, when we were at Powderhorn Park. And, you know, the, we have no control over MPD, uh, that is completely in the mayor. And unfortunately, since that time and since that declaration, everyone thinks that city council has more control over the police than we do. You know, we've been, even after witnessing what Brooklyn Center was able to do in weeks because they had a mayor and city council that were in a different structure and they were all on the same page. They were able to pass the reforms we've been asking for and haven't been able to do. Uh, so it created a lot of confusion with George Floyd Square. Um, I will just stay, answer it again, like, I mean, it's, it's not in our purview and it's up to the mayor. What I think, um, to give you a little bit of history, there was, we, the mayor and others tried to sign a letter, send a letter um, in response, uh, and tried to get other council members to sign. I wasn't going to sign on that letter. Uh, because of you, the history was listening to the community. What I would do different is, is listen more to the community. Uh, I, it's a very heated and very difficult situation. Um, but it, it is that, that is part of the job. Like it is something that you need to listen to the community, um, be able to educate the community, some of the, I, I, I think the community having the, it was a 24 um, demands, that was a gift. Like you know exactly what they want. Um, they've come together as a community to say, this is what it is there, because that, that's not always the case. Um, sometimes folks want something different, but can't tell you what that is and that's very difficult. Um, some of those are not in the city purview, but it is up to us as elected officials to say, no, we can't, we can't recall uh, Mike Freeman, even though I've campaigned against him last time. So it's just a matter of like being able to say, we were able to get 14 or 16 of these demands and we hear where you're coming from and we're committed to working with you on those other ones. And like that, that didn't happen. I, I think uh, my concern about the way George Floyd Square was broken up, um, if you have buy-in, you don't do it at four in the morning, uh, and without any warning. And so even as we're kind of talking about compassionately, you know, handling some of the encampments, like we, we just had a presentation on that this week and one of the big things was, was notice, like let people know. Um, so I, I think people understand there's a lot of competing interests with George Floyd Square. But being able to say, this is what is going to happen, um, and how we can, and talk about that would be so much more beneficial. Uh, because the, the way it's happening now, I, I think this is, it's, it's not an issue that's going away. Uh, people are not just going to get fed up and, and leave. Um, like there were real issues for occupying that intersection that need to be addressed.
I, I promise this is the last series of public safety issues I will raise. End up talking about it so much.
To be fair though, I've said you're not a real candidate if you, this isn't your top priority. So this is, makes sense that this is where we're spending the bulk of our time.
It's, it's the Peggy Sue standard.
Yeah. Although to be fair, that standard has checked out. A lot of the people who dropped out since then are people who didn't have it.
Okay.
As their, as their top, so you didn't stand the test of time.
So last year during the budget debate, I think you were the one who proposed the $5 million overtime fund. Am I, am I accurately recalling that? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
And so a lot of police boosters were offended on Chief Arredondo's behalf, saying this was an insult that it amounted to making him come and beg the city council for money. I watched the staffing presentation, excuse me. So I watched the staffing presentation and it was like, I don't know, a normal presentation, talking about staffing and what the plans were and the council approved the money and some people probably didn't like that. Some people thought it was great, but it was not, it was not an insult to Chief Arredondo. And so I hear this slogan, support our chief thrown around implying that like the council has no role for oversight, that it's an insult to question our chief. And it feels like support our troops almost, like give us the money, let us go to war and don't question us at all. And so this is a long lead up to the question of how do you see the council's role in oversight of the police department, like under the current system and how would you like it to change? Assuming the Public Safety Charter Amendment passes.
So under the current system, it's hopefully obvious to anyone, we have, we have no oversight. You know, even the, excuse me, the, the very modest request to come back to council for $5 million, which is a significant amount of money for overtime. Especially when you consider uh, the MPD budget has, has gone over their budget um, multiple times and multiple years without a lot of explanation. And, and the public deserves a better, um, more transparency and more accountability in that. Uh, it is, it is honestly just better management to be able to see, you know, where that money is going to and what it's being spent on. So at, at this point, we have very little oversight, um, with that. Uh, what I would like to see and why I'm, you know, pushing for a new department of public safety is the same type of oversight we have in every other department. Uh, when we're, when we're spending that much, uh, like it is like one of the biggest departments we have in the city. Taxpayers deserve to know where their money's going. You know, they need to, deserve to be able to say whether they agreed with something or not, where that money went to. And, and frankly, we, we haven't gotten to the question of reducing crime. You know, like the, there's no, e- every other department, we have a problem and we spend money on it. And then we track those results and we spend money accordingly. Uh, with the Minneapolis Police Department, it, we more have a debate on how many officers we have. And we don't look at what's causing the crime, what is happening. Like right now, we're down 200 officers, yet property crime in my area is down. And so if you're just trying to, like the math doesn't add up on that. If you're, if the, the math, I should say, the math that the MPD is trying to use does, does not work. So we need to be able to say, here's a program and here's our outputs. And that's really where we're trying to go with the Department of Public Safety, really focus on reducing crime. Um, and focus on having, you know, your real answers and not just we'll get more cops or we'll get less cops.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to SROs.
Okay, that's quite a transition.
Yeah, I forgot to play my sound effect.
With, with all due respect, I was serious about wrapping up. If you could take the next 20 seconds.
So I'm not entirely happy with the SRO legalization. And excuse me for my voice. Okay, let's explain what SROs are. It's rooming houses, which are, you know, they could look like any normal house. They're just split up into private rooms with shared kitchen and bathroom facilities. And the proposal that came from staff, which I'm pretty sure you voted for at Planning Commission, was to restrict these to government entities and nonprofits only and to restrict it to basically places in the city that allow fourplexes and higher, which excludes it from the, the R1 and R2 parts of the city, which are traditionally like single family and duplex areas, very low density areas. So explain to me why I shouldn't be very mad at you for supporting, uh, what I think is a very affordable, for not supporting, uh, and I think is a way to address the homelessness crisis. It's a, it's a form of affordable housing that was outlawed decades ago. Why shouldn't we allow like non-government, non, nonprofit, if I can say that word, uh, nonprofits from, from operating those?
Sure. So I'm, I'm one of the authors of the, I didn't just vote for it, I actually was one of the authors of it.
Oh, so I'm never clear if like staff came back and like gave you something, so it was your idea.
Staff came back and we as authors debated, what's the best way to roll this out? And so it definitely is a, a program that can be increased. You, you bring up some of those examples. The reason we're rolling it out is to really make sure we, we get this right in this first year. Some of the reasons that um, SROs were, you know, deemed illegal were, were the types of kind of management um, that they had. And so enforcement is going to be a bigger, bigger deal like this, as well as uh, one of the other changes I did was to our emergency shelter. Ordinance says earlier in the year, just to use an analogy, um, like the tiny homes, um, project that was able to, to come up. The, the, our emergency shelter was more based just on kind of the perception of what a sh- an emergency shelter was based on neighbors. And it wasn't based on something, a, a staffing ratio or the ability to, to make sure that um, you have a good emergency shelter. It's the same kind of issue with the, us, the single room occupancy. We need to make sure that we're not, we separate the um, the licensing and separate the um, enforcement of what that ordinance needs to be with the housing type. And so this first year is going to really focus on how um, the city is able to enforce these, um, is able to, how we're able to kind of work with developers to get more of them. Um, I would say it's, I'm really proud of it. I, I agree with you. I think this can be a really affordable way to uh, really take a chunk out of um, like the housing need. Uh, but it's also not a silver bullet, like having this throughout the city. Like having this throughout the city is not, um, going to be the way we're going to in homelessness. So in this first year, uh, like why I'm supporting it, even though it is, is limited, is to make sure we can do it right. To make sure that this, we can show that this can be a really positive one. Uh, we'll learn from our nonprofit, uh, partners on how to do this well. Um, and there's nothing stopping us from expanding it in the future.
And so is that a commitment to come back next year and expand it, assuming nothing happens? Because it seems to me like if there's a regulatory issue, we'll just decide how you're going to regulate it. Like predicting it's going to become a nuisance, like we could figure out ways. Cause you hear this a lot with apartments. This apartment building is going to be a nuisance. It's going to be bad for the neighborhood. But like painting an entire type of housing, if it's as if it's a problem because you experienced that problem with some other type of housing, like we find ways to regulate these things in a way that make sure they're not a nuisance. But I mean, restricting to, uh, government entities and nonprofits seems like a recipe to not have many built. We're not going to have very many built. And I'm curious, like, are we really going to learn anything after not having built very many? Does that teach us anything that we don't know already about how to regulate these, these housing types?
That's a, a good point. I mean, I would push back that the reason to get this passed, you know, this has been moving very fast, uh, for an ordinance and the idea is to get that out, you know, in the next couple of months. Like it's already passed going through planning commission. Looking at just even some of the hotels that the county has bought, uh, to serve as emergency shelters. The goal is with a SRO, um, ordinance, those could be turned into long-term housing. You know, we, we had an immediate need for emergency shelter, um, last year. I mean, Hennepin County's shelter system with the, um, spacing and, and kind of health restrictions for COVID-19, that, that really reduced the amount of emergency shelter we had. So they were looking to buy hotels and have, um, so this in the immediate short term would give Hennepin County the opportunity to turn this into long-term housing. So that was really the goal of that, um, to be able to say, you know, to get, make sure that we are, to your point, like we are creating more housing and it will get built and there will be something to, to study. But, you know, I, I think also you, you'd said, you know, making sure that we can learn how to regulate, that's, that's really what this is right now too. Like how can we get some, make sure that there are some housing, uh, some of these SROs built or created? Learn from them and then expand, uh, the policy.
Peggy Sue, uh, you're a planner. So do you have any insight? Can you grill, grill Jeremy?
I guess I would just be curious, you know, that just, I, I think I'm more on John's side of the issue where it just feels like not enough when we feel, I feel like we're on the precipice of a housing and climate crisis, right? Like, I, I think I, I, we've talked about this almost every time I'm on this podcast, but I think it's like even more, you know, looking at Seattle and Portland with, you know, 100 degree temps in places that don't have air conditioning. I just, I think that it's so imminent that people continue to migrate here. And so, you know, I'm curious, okay. If your perspective is we have to kind of do this slow and steady and figure out the regulation perspective, like what are the other ways that we, you know, how do we solve a housing crisis and in the midst of a climate crisis? And especially from your perspective, a ward that doesn't have, that has a lot of single family homes. And you're not, we're not building a lot of, you know, multifamily, we're not building a lot of these mechanisms. So what's, what's the solution for that?
Sure. So I, I would say, um, I'm not trying to roll out the SRO slow. We're trying to r- roll it out now and trying to roll it out right. And so how can we expand, uh, the types of housing? How can we best reuse buildings that we currently have? You know, how can we turn, you know, a, a hotel into a, actual permanent housing? How can we turn former schools into actual permanent housing? The solution, I, I think we, we have to do all things at once, you know, I, I think we need to combine, uh, environmental justice with affordable housing. I guess to start with how, how I approach, you know, ending homelessness and having, making sure everyone has a safe, stable, affordable place to live is really focus on the things that make housing on affordable land costs, material costs, labor costs. How can we really change some of that? And it, I would say, one, we need to focus on preserving the affordable housing we have and really start there from an environmental point of view, like the home we have, um, tearing that down and creating new will create some, create new, um, impacts on the environment with just the embedded carbon and just the emissions it takes to build. So that's one part of it, uh, and also just being very real about what it's going to take to retrofit these homes. If we are, um, I think the other way I look at it is, is really looking, being honest about a timeline. And so if we are setting a goal of 2030, uh, to make sure our housing is more sustainable and that we have cut our emissions, then we need to look at what, what housing do we preserve as affordable housing? How do we retrofit that? What the overall cost is going to be? And then compare that to the cost of creating new. We need to find new ways to do things. And so, um, I can give you a couple of examples. In the American Recovery Plan, um, I'm really proud that some of the things that are being funded besides the SRO pilot, um, and there is the Envision. They're funding a, a project for the, kind of the Envision project, which is, uh, something I worked on, um, that it creates ultra affordable, ultra sustainable housing. So it's, it's smaller units, uh, but it is made with, uh, the zip panels. And it is something that, um, can go pretty much anywhere in the city. And it also, um, was created by working with, uh, a group of currently homeless people. So it's Street Voices for Change and just to have their voice and have them be a major part of what housing would look like for them. And tie that to environmental justice is, is really the type of solutions that we're going to need. So it's, sorry, this is getting into be a longer answer, but it, it is.
With, with all due respect, I was serious about wrapping up. If you could take the next 20 seconds and wrap up.
In the, in the last 20 seconds, I would say we, we don't have the, the tools to get there. And what that means is we need to be experimenting. We, we need to be holding ourselves accountable to, to having, if we don't have solutions now, we need to set a date that we need to have them and be very real about that and be very serious that, um, if we have not reduced our emissions by a time, we can no longer continue to operate as we do.
Yeah. So a lot of the things that we've talked about in the last hour, you know, from public safety to housing to, you know, a lot of these issues, I, I think I've heard you talk really almost around race inequity. And, uh, I don't know if it's intentional, right? But, uh, but I would be curious to just kind of understand like where, where you're at in that, especially you represent, I don't know, a, a pretty white part of Minneapolis. You're a white man. Like what is this? What does this feel like for you? And how are you, how do you position yourself as an advocate, uh, for those issues?
Well, I would say that, you know, race has to be front and center in absolutely everything we do. Like we cannot talk about climate without talking about the, the history of racism, um, in, in this entire country. Well, and frankly, in the world. Um, so it is something, um, everything I do races front and center. Like the area I represent, I represent an area that was very much formed by redlining and racial covenants. You know, half of my ward was redlined. The other half, we had racial covenants. And I, I don't think people i- it have really gotten to the point to discuss what, that we created a white space with that and what it would take to, uh, make this a more diverse area. It's, it's going to take more than, um, just making sure we have an even playing field now is going to be, make going to need intentional effort to make sure that we are, are welcoming to really question what we are doing in, in this part of the city to make sure that, um, we are, are open to all, um, and that we've addressed kind of our, our history of racism. I, I, that is, uh, on every issue, whether that's environmental justice or affordable housing, like race plays a really key role. And all of that, it's, it's 2021. We have some of the worst racial disparities, like just this week, finding out that we have the worst homeowner disparity in, in the country, I believe. Like that's, that's horrific. You know, we need to have programs that work on that, uh, one, and it's something that, you know, I do focus on. That's, I'm one of the authors of the Tenant Opportunity Purchase Act that we're working on right now. That's a big address, something that would, would help a lot here. Minneapolis has, you know, terrible history with, um, having, like families of color lose their homeownership, especially after kind of the, how the financial crisis of 2008. Those all flipped to be rental housing and we need to have policies that will be able to create homeownership opportunities and to create ways that people can, can build wealth. I mean, I will, we'll put the huge caveat on that. We don't need to have everyone be a homeowner. But the, the laws in this country give so many benefits to owning your home that it really is not fair. And so if that is the case, we need to be making sure that, um, BIPOC communities and others that have, have been under resource for so long are able to have those same opportunities.
Okay. I'm, I'm speeding through to the Twitter submitted questions. And just to be, I don't know, to be respectful of, of Jeremy Schrader's time, I'm going to limit him to 30 second answers. And some of these are going to take more than 30 seconds. So it's going to be fun. Do you support Councilmember Gordon's proposed changes to the police oversight ordinance? And I, do you know what that is? Should I?
I don't know. I, I know he's working on it. I haven't, I haven't looked at that.
I, I will read something from his tweets. Uh, here we go. Elevate the commission and connect them more purposefully and directly with the review of complaints. Also remove police from doing complaint investigations and serving on misconduct review panels, returning and strengthening the focus on non-police oversight through a resident commission supported by Civil Rights Department staff. Uh, also defining discipline as a corrective action. No, defining discipline as all corrective action, including but not limited to coaching, a letter of reprimand and suspension and firing. All sustained complaints must be disciplined. Does that sound good to you? Would you support that?
I think a lot of that I would support, especially the, the coaching has been horrific, like the fact that, um, you know, MPD, they can label something coaching and then it just doesn't get, you know, the transparency or the actual discipline. That, that's a glaring issue that needs to be taken care of.
Okay. That's an acceptable answer. I appreciate the length of that answer. Understanding that the council has no direct control over the MPD and that there are long-term efforts in the works to transform public safety. What if anything can council do to help reduce the current spike in violence? 30 seconds.
What the council can do is exactly what the council's doing is focusing on how do we increase, um, what is viewed as public safety and really address, um, all of these other ways or non-police ways to reduce crime. Whether that is youth programming, whether that's affordable housing, whether that is, um, mental health responders. All of these ways will, will make us safer, um, and will be able to, um, also reduce the number of calls that police officers go to. You know, we have sent officers for everything and if we can really focus them on where their experience and their training is best, uh, we're going to have much better outcomes.
Okay. Here's another Twitter submitted question. Can we get public restrooms? That's all there is. Can we get public restrooms?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Why did he, why did he vote? And he is Jeremy Schrader to eliminate a dozen or so apartments off of the Dinky Town McDonald's building for subj- subjective aesthetic reasons? Isn't that bad for climate change and affordability to needlessly restrict density along transit lines where everybody will walk to the U? Do you recall that vote? I think staff, staff came with a recommendation that like approve it. And then, uh, maybe it was the commission, maybe it was zoning planning committee, like lopped off, like made a, a bigger setback and it cut 12 units or so off the project. We're mad at you for that. Just want you to know.
That's, that's fair. That's fair.
Go back and revisit that. Is there anything to be done about poor communication between council and the mayor's office? Or is the main problem that Jacob refuses to talk to people who disagree with him?
I think there could be much better communication. Um, I don't know a way to, to have that. Well, I mean, Jacob hasn't come to a council meeting in months, even though he needs to report on the emergency, uh, on his emergency powers. I might leave it there on the 30 seconds.
You loo- you looked a little mortified at that question. Like you didn't, you didn't want to get into it.
Funny. I'm just like, how do I? It, it, I think with that question, it's just like, we have 13 very different people who are, some are able to come to an agreement on very hard issues. And we have one person that can't interact with that. And somehow the communication issue is, is with the council and not with the mayor. So I, I think that it's something that it's, it's a, it, the question is right on. Like we need to be talking about how to have that communication and we need to be holding folks accountable. Council comes together, we'll be there on Friday altogether.
Is the mayor going to be there?
We'll find out.
Probably not. The left turn from Cedar into the South Minneapolis Lunds parking lot is the new left turn from Lyndale into the Wedge parking lot. True or false?
Wow. True.
Okay. I think that, that'll be a pleasing answer for Ward 11. Okay. And now we're moving on to the joke questions. In 2017, you were the victim of an attack ad that portrayed you as a child dentist. In 2021, how would you like to be characterized by big business interests? And these are your three choices. You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Doctor who gets nervous around needles. Second choice, kitty cat kindergarten teacher. This is a cat who teaches kindergarten. The kids love Mrs. Kitty Cat, but they will never be ready for first grade. And so your third, your third option is teen wolf firefighter. Teen Wolf firefighter is a high school student who moonlights as a firefighter, but things get complicated when his colleagues realize he's part werewolf and hasn't met the fire department's education requirements. So which of, which of those three would you like to, uh, to be called on a mailer to Ward 11 residents?
Oh, I, I like, uh, C, the teen wolf. I, I like the depth of that one.
Okay. And it'll, it would also get you in good with the firefighters union. Are they going to endorse you this year? I think they endorsed you last year.
They have not. They endorsed me last time, but not this time.
Okay. Well, you, you've displeased them. What is the relationship between the firefighters union and the police union? Are they basically the same thing?
They're not the same thing, though, but they're very close.
Right. It's like, they feel like, it feels like they act in concert. Okay. Final question. You're, you're, right now you're looking at a picture of four people. And I want you to say, who is the real Jeremy Schrader? This is possibly an easy question for you because you are Jeremy Schrader. But other people have not been good at this, so I wanted to test it on you.
Sure. So I'm, I'm going to go number three, although I, I don't remember looking that, you know, sultry.
Yeah, that's true. People often say number two, which was, which is a pharmaceutical ad. I, I think the pharmaceutical companies know that I watch a lot of Jeremy Schrader on TV and have like produced ads that give me a, a man's face that looks remarkably like you. Okay. That's, that's a weird way to end the show. Peggy Sue, do you have a better way to end the show?
This is the moment Peggy Sue's computer failed.
Okay. Do you, do you have a closing message to voters, Jeremy Schrader?
I don't just, I, I just, it's important to vote and especially in these municipal elections.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you for spending, uh, like an entire hour with us. I know you have a lot of responsibilities. And thank you Peggy Sue for co-hosting. I'm John Edwards and like, uh, I should probably say like, support the show on Patreon. I've never done this on the podcast, but patreon.com slash wedge live. I spend so much time editing this podcast.